This is from Jason Hyde. Mr. Hyde, please, please come forward and give us your comment.
Oh, I won't give my time to you.
Okay, so you don't want to make a comment?
I'll give my time to you.
Okay, then our first comment is from Tiffany Hyde. Welcome, Ms. Hyde. Please state your name for the record, even though I've just said it.
Tiffany Hyde.
Thank you.
Two zero nine four North Cross, Shreveport seven eleven oh seven. Good afternoon. I come today to address the matter of the Lakeview Water District that was added to today's agenda. Back in August, we had the issue that was given much attention in regard to a decision made by Commissioner Young over District Two. We held a water board meeting that Mr. Young attended, and it got heated. In that, in that meeting, I sat and listened to a commissioner raise his voice over us and place his hand in my face when I asked to speak in hopes of de-escalating the conversation, but I was directly told no. He reminded us all of his overall authority and walked out with aggressive comments towards another board member. In that meeting, I felt threatened, fearful, and intimidated. Due to those feelings at that time, I had given resignation. After much thought, I attended the following commission meeting on May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and publicly rescinded my resignation before this very commission in order to continue my duties as I felt those were more important to my community and our water board as a whole. It was after my rescinded statement at the meeting that Mr. Young stated he accepted the resignation, which at that time would have required a vote amongst the commission. The vote did not take place. I reached out as to where I stood, however, never, never once got a direct answer. Therefore, according to the bylaws of our Lakeview Water District, I presume business on that board. And in our last meeting on August first, we had a very successful and productive meeting amongst ourselves with Mr. Young's, without Mr. Young's presence. We brought some much-needed conversations to the table and worked those out in order to regroup and continue our work together as a board. I've given you each a copy of the minutes, and I would also, I also in there have included the per diem check for which I received. I've also provided a copy of our bylaws and what they state as far as removal and appointments for the board. Board members were not made aware of such removal of myself, and I did not know that myself nor Bob Brown were being replaced. Laws and bylaws are written for a reason. They are not to be ignored due to personal opinion, government overreach, or abuse of power. I stand when our Constitution says and represents to our country as I pledge, just as we did at the very opening of this meeting. I take pride in the words "to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all." This matter at hand is a perfect example of a citizen in the community who wishes to serve under oath in the love of her community, being stripped of her role and doing so out of abuse of authority. Please be reminded with these proceedings of this meeting and the votes of this commission, for each of you represent a district, but as here in this room, you represent our votes as an entire parish. God bless you, have a great day. And I also included two letters of recommendation for myself in the packets that I gave you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde. Our next comment is from Tracy and Kalen Little. Welcome, Mrs. and Ms. Little.
Thank you. Tracy and Kalen Little, we live at fifty fifty-seven Dixie Garden Drive, Shreveport seven eleven oh five. We've lived in Shreveport all of our lives. We are here today to ask for your approval to ordinance six four four nine of two thousand and twenty-four and the PZC case twenty-four dash twenty-one dash P. It is for the property located at eleven thirty-three K Lane that we own and is currently C one. We are requesting it to be rezoned to C two for the purpose of opening a venue space.
Excuse me, Ms., excuse me, Ms. Little. This is about, this is a comment about zoning. Usually, we do those comments later in the agenda in the section about, about zoning, which has zoning comments. Would you like to, would you like to delay yours till then, or just go ahead and say it now?
Mr. President, if I may, she asked, and I said, it could be handled in the open, in the public comments or at that session.
Either way, it's fine with me. I just wanted to tell you the options. Would you rather finish now? Probably.
Sure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
The building has been vacant for many years. It was originally the location for Woodsmen of the World, which was a fraternal organization much like the Lions Club, Shriners, or the Masonic Lodge. Also, to my understanding, it was the location of two churches.
Eleven thirty-three is already in a multi-use area. There are a few residents on the east and vacant lots on the south and the north. The W H Booth Lodge is to the west and the property along, along with Blue Hair and Septic. There are several industrial businesses such as Super ATV, Everything Marketing, and Morris Dixon. Less than half a mile south down East Kings Highway, there are several C three businesses such as T and R Metal Works, Pro Film, and Black Label Services.
Under C one, there are businesses that offer the same services that we will be offering. For example, indoor amusement, lodge and meeting hall, place of worship, and a restaurant. All of these rent their facilities out for the same events that our business will be doing.
Kalen is twenty-two years old and a senior at Louisiana Tech, getting a degree in business. We definitely see a need in southeast Shreveport for a medium-sized venue. There are smaller and some larger, but we are wanting a nice, affordable place where families and businesses can use our facility multiple times.
Our building will be beautifully updated, a beautifully updated place to hold family events such as bridal or baby showers, a graduation party, or a fiftieth wedding reception. Or a place where businesses can hold corporate meetings, awards, banquets, employee training, or holiday parties. Our main focus is going to be events that are held during the day.
Today, we have given each of you a packet that includes the existing floor plan, the revised floor plan, a preliminary site plan, which does not show the finalized landscaping, and the additional parking areas. A picture of the privacy fence and four letters from neighborhood, neighbors that are in support of the zoning change. Hopefully, this will give you an idea of what we would like, what we would like this space to look like. With us owning the building, we have a vested interest in keeping the property values up, the building well-maintained. We want other people to open new businesses and continue to see growth and good things for Shreveport. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Little, thank you, Ms. Little. Our next comment is from Mrs. John Glover. Welcome, Ms. Glover.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioners. John Glover, ninety-one hundred Rocker Road, apartment two seventeen, Shreveport seven eleven eighteen. I stand before you all, asking for consideration. Consideration as a constituent who stands before you on numerous of occasions, addressing issues that are paramount to me, to get, to get an understanding or an explanation. Oftentimes, as constituents standing before you all, I don't always receive the feedback that I'm looking for, the information that addresses the need that I bring before you. Instead, I am met with comments after the fact that are not representative of good professional decorum towards me. Now, I know that there are others who have met the same and similar, and we often ask why no one comes to our meetings, when no one is going to come to a meeting whereby they are going to become the whipping boy, because that's not what we're here for. You all have been elected to address the needs of our parish. And though each of you address the districts individually, collectively, you, you represent the parish as a whole. So it is of the utmost importance that when I or anyone has anything to say to you all with regards to an agenda item, that that item be received as given. If there are comments, allow, if you're going to debate it, the person who brings those comments to you an opportunity to rebut. Because when it is that your comments are the comments with no regard is given to the constituent who brought them forth, then we are at a disadvantage. We're not here to be beat down. We're not here to beat you all down either. But we are here to bring forth to you all any concern or consideration that requires your attention. Two, the act of englobing. You know, that is a tool that I feel like you all use to not address issues that we need to understand. And you do it quite often. I think it's something that you all should revisit, because englo, excuse me, englobing again. If there's an item that I want to hear a conversation about, you advance it. You don't talk about it at the work session. So that means what? I gotta come back on Thursday to hear you all discuss it. This is what the work session is supposed to be about. It is supposed to be about you all addressing agenda items that you put on this agenda, whether it's going to be advanced and how you will support or not support based on your conversation. You don't have to tell us you're going to adopt it, but at least give us a chance to know what you're going to do or what that legislation really means. I thank you for your time, and I pray that you don't take this as an indictment, not even an antagonistic moment, but just as constituent who wants to understand the purpose of why she comes and stands before you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Okay, that brings us to visitors. Do we have any scheduled visitors? I don't think so.
We do not have any scheduled visitors today.
Okay.
So you can report your reports if you like. You do have, you know, typically, we have finance reports on the second meeting, but given the meeting schedule last month, you do have a finance report as well as the administrative report.
Okay, so before reports, Commissioner Jones, do you wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to move up item eleven point seventeen. To vote to advance it to Thursday, but present today.
I second.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to do eleven point seventeen special resolution for Jeffrey Batiste first. Are there any objections to suspending the rules for that purpose? Give me a thumbs up for acclamation. Okay, so rules are suspended by acclamation. I will do eleven point seventeen.
And on item eleven point seventeen, it is a special resolution for, it is, I'm sorry, a motion, I mean, a motion to advance. Would be appropriate for a special resolution for Jeffrey Batiste. And that item is attached, if you'd like, since it's proposed to be presented at this time. I can go ahead and read it into the record?
Okay, please stand.
Okay. One moment as it comes up. Okay, and it is a resolution of appreciation and recognition for Jeffrey Batiste. And with apologies, my monitor is not working, and I cannot read it. So one moment.
I'll read it.
Thank you.
Okay. Whereas it is the desire of the Caddo Parish Commission to give appropriate acknowledgement and recognition to individuals who have rendered invaluable service on behalf of the citizens of Caddo Parish. And whereas such a person is Jeffrey Batiste Jr., a thirteen-year-old student at Walnut Hill Middle School in Caddo Parish, home of the Hornets, has demonstrated exceptional talent and dedication for the sport of soccer. Whereas Jeffrey Batiste Jr. was afforded the extraordinary opportunity to play soccer in Rome, Italy, where he competed against professional academy teams. And whereas Jeffrey participated in soccer tryouts held in Louisiana, Georgia, and Florida, and was selected to be a member of the prestigious Dream Team Twenty Twenty Four International Soccer Team. And whereas this remarkable opportunity allowed Jeffrey to advance and showcase his soccer skills and to grow as a player by training and competing with pro academy teams in Europe. And whereas during his time in Rome, Jeffrey was voted MVP of a training session, served as team captain for the second game, for their second game, and contributed to the team's victory against V S J Valletary. And whereas Jeffrey received an individual player evaluation by a U E P A licensed coach. Sorry, there's that F A licensed coach achieving as impressive scores of nine out of ten. And whereas, in addition to his athletic accomplishments, Jeffrey had the opportunity to visit significant landmarks in Rome, including the ancient city of Rome, the Colosseum, the Vatican City, the Pantheon, the Spanish Strips, and Trevi Fountain. And whereas this overall experience not only enhanced Jeffrey's athletic abilities, but also broadened his cultural horizons and provided him with valuable life experiences. And whereas Jeffrey Batiste Jr. has represented our community with excellence, serving as a commendable ambassador of Caddo Parish on the international stage. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission that it hereby recognizes and honors Jeffrey Batiste Jr. for his outstanding achievements in soccer, his dedication to his sport, and his exemplary representation of Caddo Parish. Signed, John Paul Young, President. Vice President, yours truly, Stormy Gage Watts. Stefan Jones, District Seven Clerk, Jeff Efferson.
Mr. Batiste, would you like to say anything?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Sounds like you're a great soccer player. Rome is a fantastic place to visit. I know everybody is proud of you and wants to congratulate you. My board is showing motions instead of anyone who wants to speak. Oh, I see it up there. Commissioner Burrell, would you like to speak?
Sure. Jeffrey, I thought I saw you on the Olympic, you know, I'm really tuned into the Olympics this year. And, you know, I saw somebody look kind of like, you sure you shouldn't be over there right now? You didn't escape, did you?
No, sir.
No, sir. Well, look, we're looking forward to you. I don't know if there's an age limit or at some point that you can be on the Olympics, but I tell you what, you would be very representative of the U.S. And keep that in mind. We support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to invite Jeffrey down. I actually met him at Bishop Randall's Church and heard his story, and I was like, this is amazing. If you're not really into soccer, UEFA is the top of the top. That is the best of the clubs. Ronaldo, Messi, all of these guys came through that same type of rank. And to have a young person from our parish who could very well one day soon be playing on a world stage, on an international stage, I think is a huge accomplishment. On top of being an outstanding athlete, he is a straight A student. And I think it's just commendable. I, you know, I believe in bringing our citizens down, but I really want our young people, any chance I get an opportunity to recognize one of our young people, to know that your parish cares and we recognize what you're doing. And we don't want to wait till you make it big to say, you know, we knew you were going to be great. We wanted to tell you now and speak their life into you. So if ever you run into an obstacle or life makes you feel like you can't be great, I'm telling you today that you are great and that you're gonna make it and that God has a plan for you. And I wanted you to be able to come down and let your parish see you. There are people watching on Facebook as well, and he's, he's a quiet kid. I didn't expect him to say anything, and I hope I'm not embarrassing you. But I wanted to definitely recognize you for your work and to say to your parents as well, a job well done on making sure that he stays, not just, because a lot of times in today's culture, we focus on athletics so much that we don't worry about academics. And this young man is positioning himself to do whatever he wants to do and go wherever he wants to go. And is a prime example that there are no excuses. We can all get it done if we really try and work hard at it. So great job, parents. Great job, Jeffrey. Congratulations, and I hope to see you on TV soon.
All right, thank you.
Don't leave. Don't leave, we have some more comments.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Efferson?
Young man, based upon your academics accomplishments, I would encourage you to strive for a soccer scholarship at Stanford out in California. A good academic school, athletic also, as well as you'll be ready for the twenty twenty-eight Olympics, which will be held in Los Angeles that year. So strive for that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Efferson. Commissioner Gage Watts?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, Jeffrey.
Thank you.
These, these are my neighbors, to my colleagues. And I've had the pleasure of knowing, I see grandmother, I saw her as I was running in. Hi, Ms. Quinn. I see you back there. We're just so proud of you and your accomplishments. Congratulations to you two parents, because I know what it takes to make sure they get to all of those practices and stay on top of those grades as well. So you're excelling in every area of your life, and I know that you have the best foundation in Christ because I know what church you attend also. And it's just such a pleasure to be able to recognize you on this level. Keep up the good work, and please let us know if we can do anything in contributing to his success. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts. Thank you, and congratulations again. Okay, so now we have a motion to advance this item to Thursday. Shall we go ahead and vote on that, and then we'll go back into regular session?
You should be able to vote now? Yeah. Okay. And that motion carries with twelve in support and none in opposition.
Is there a motion to go back to regular session?
Second.
By acclamation? Back in regular session now. Item seven, reports. Administrator report is first.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm just kind of want to give you an update on the Walter V Jacobs Nature Park. We are progressing really well on that project. The concrete for the beams should be poured this week with later concrete being poured. And so we're excited about the progression of that project. I wanted to let you know that the commission was able to help eighteen families during the relocation assistance for the apartments that faced struggles with, that was mainly the Jolie and the Pines. The commission jumped in and helped relocate those citizens who otherwise would not have been able to do that. The next intergovernmental meeting is scheduled for September twentieth. The city is planning that event, and once we get a location, we'll let you know. But it would be at lunchtime, and location to be determined. We have been notified that we do have our first case of neuroinvasive West Nile. Unfortunately, animal and mosquito. We have increased our communication to our citizens about precautions that should be taken in regards to mosquitoes. We're also putting together a video to warn our citizens about the need to protect themselves from mosquitoes because of the, this virus. You should have your June twenty-four financial statements at your station. The numbers for juvenile detention are twenty-three in detention, three O J J, two seventeen-year-olds, and six hundred and twenty-three probation cases. Mr. Callenberg was supposed to be here today. He has asked to delay that to your next meeting due to some illness in their staffing. So we'll delay that to the next meeting. That concludes the administration report. We'll take any questions at this time.
Commissioner Burrell, do you have a question?
I will come. The mosquito in West Nile, as you know, each year I, I bring the issue up because of where our houses are located, which is it packs up to a stream that relieves Queensborough and that area, drains that area. And because of the way the drainage is structured, that aerial seal, that area, that waterway silts in, and it creates puddles. You know, a lot of part of October, it'll, it'll drain to the point where you have puddles back there in that area. And I requested that we have that area sprayed. And I think that we brought the aerial spray. Have not seen.
You mean the drone?
The drone. Have not seen it sprayed in my area, and I think you said you had to schedule it or something. So would you check on that, because there are definitely coming mosquitoes today already. The second thing that I have here is minority participation in the Walter V Jacobs project. I had gotten some concerns from contractors as to the participation of minority of businesses in that major project. Could you get me the, how we are bearing in terms of minority participation in that project?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Any other questions or comments for our administration? I would like for us to all have access to maybe a request form or map or something for mosquito droning for our districts, because all of us know of a boggy area where they're breeding. And I know we have that nice drone, we ought to use it. Maybe you could email that to us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Efferson? Oh, I see you're on the board now. Okay, great.
Ms. Bryant, do you know if Dr. Martha White is still engaged under new administration with the Department of Public Health?
Yes, it's my understanding she's still with the Department of Public Health.
I was just wondering maybe if you could get her to give us a report relative to COVID. I know I, I've heard that there are a lot of COVID cases still going around. If they could give us an update as to that, as well as, I thought they may have been working on another booster. So if they can give us an update on, on that COVID at some point in time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Efferson. Okay, looks like that's everyone on the board. Now we have, let me sure Marx communicates. There are two discussion items in here, so if you have one of those discussion items, let's let other people talk first, and then we'll do the discussion item. This is communicates, but there's two discussion items. So if there's a non-discussion item communicate, let's do that first, and then we'll do the ones that are in order. So Jeff, the board is not showing up on my screen, and it's no longer showing up on these screens either. So I can't, I don't know. Oh, there we go, okay. Okay, so number one, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a question from staff.
You sure can't.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryant, I have a question regarding a liquor license in District Nine. Where would I address that question?
What finance handles the, is it a license that comes through the parish? That's, finance handles those licenses.
Okay, I'll, I'll pick it up with Ms. Bryant then. Thank you, pardon me.
Ms. Barnett.
Haley.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Blake, you're next.
Thank you, President. I would like to, if we, getting information, let's get information to share about flu as well. I've heard that it's already kind of happening and that this is a good time to, if you do so, to get inoculated for flu season. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to stay for eight point two. I did request to have that pulled, and that, that conversation is more appropriate in the appropriations committee. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so that's all the free flowing comments. Now we have discussion of Caddo cleanup and issues related to tire disposal, tire amnesty day. Commissioner Gage Watts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I included this item as an action item on the agenda today. We've had some discussion in the past about this, and one of the most reported issues that I receive is tires along with dumping. And these two very valid complaints continues to be a nuisance everywhere. So I'd like to propose hosting another tire amnesty day. I know that we did one, maybe in twenty-one was the last one that we held, if I'm correct. But this keep Caddo clean initiatives to include the dumpsters on site throughout the parish, partner with the recycling facilities and other public facilities. I would like to schedule this at least by the first week of September and to call for a parish-wide cleanup to establish a cadence at our public safety meeting, on our next public safety meeting with Commissioner Efferson. And we'll discuss other initiatives at that time with the signs, postings, and surveillance cameras as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts.
So at this time, I would like to just look at our calendars and see if that first week in September would be sufficient for us to host this day. That'll be Labor Day weekend. The second. Okay. And at the appropriate time, we need to make a motion to do that weekend. Okay.
And you're running it Labor Day weekend?
Yes. Yes.
That sounds like a great idea. So will there be? Like a dumpster provided by the parish in every district if we want one, and we pick the place? Mine is going to fill up with tires.
We'll probably have discussions. I think you're, you're going to try to make this an action item that you all actually vote to host this event.
Right.
And then if we have that, we'll have discussions about how you want this established, locations, and do you want a dumpster? And it said tire amnesty, or we're talking about any, so we'll just have additional discussions about what this would entail.
Trash, dumping, all of those illegal things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So we're doing all that, but yeah, we might have to talk about the date also.
Okay. I'm amicable to that.
Great, okay, good discussion.
Thank you.
Let's, let's keep it moving on in another venue. Okay, the president's report today. Oh, there is another one? Oh, I see. Oh, no, he took eight too long. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to say anything in response to some of the very derogatory remarks that were made about me today, but then I thought, you know, there's, a lot of people out there may not know me, and so I can't just leave that on the table. First of all, the assertion that was made that somehow that I came to a meeting bullying folks is without merit. In fact, the lady who came up and made these representations arrived at the meeting with a resignation letter. And I talked to some of the board members, and they all have indicated to me that she never came to any board meeting with her husband accompanying her. So she also came and videotaped the entire meeting. So who was trying to bully who? Now, anybody that wants to bully me, ain't having it. I'm not having it. I work for everything that I have. I think the comment that I made that disturbed them the most, and they've come up here and they made representations about it, is the fact that I told them after they told me that if I appointed Ms. Leiter to that water district, they would resign, accusing her of being a thief. Now, I worked on that water district years ago, and I maintain a personal relationship with Ms. Leiter. And by the way, she's over 80 years old, and she's a very sickly and frail, but very honest white lady, in case anybody want to racialize this whole situation. But I told them that I had informed Ms. Leiter that I was going to put her on that water district board. I gave her my word, and my word matters. And I think the thing that disturbed them the most is when I began to describe how important my word is. And as a point of reference, I indicated that I have a perfect credit score of 900. Now, they took offense to that. I was only trying to illustrate my personal obsession with paying my debts, paying my They took offense to that. I can't know why. I won't, I won't sit here and try to describe what motivated them. But they were offended. Now, I never, ever put my hand in the young lady's face. We were sitting on opposite sides of the table. In fact, I think her husband was sitting more directly in front of me. I was pissed off. Oh, yes, I was. Because anytime somebody suggests to me that someone whose integrity I can vouch for is somehow dishonest, and this old lady is sick, a widow, it's going to rub me a certain It doesn't matter whether a person is black or white, I'm always going to stand for the little guy. I'm always going to stand for the underdog. I joined the military at 17 years old. I was eight months removed from being 16. And I volunteered for the United States Infantry, even though I could have gone in any career field that I wanted to. Was I delusional in thinking that somehow as a young child that I could engage the enemies of America? Maybe so. But I'm not afraid of a fight, but I never punch down. Anybody who wants to come up here, even if they don't like me, or they don't appreciate me, they can come up here and say whatever they want to say. As I suggested on a previous occasion, we don't issue an oath to people when they come up here, so they can say whatever it is they want to say. And anybody who wants to come up here and say anything they want to say about me, I'd rather that you say it to me than say it to any of my colleagues up here. I want that smoke. If you want to write something, if you want to write something bad about somebody, write about me and leave my colleagues alone. Anything that you want to put out there, put it on me. Leave these people alone. These people out here don't, trying to do the work for their community. And yes, oftentimes, we advocate for black people. And I advocate for black people not because I want to hold white people back. That's not who I am. I'm not trying to hold back anybody. I want everybody to prosper. But you don't have to travel far in the United States of America to see that black folks are way behind, way behind. I'm trying to push black people forward. I'm not trying to hold white people back. That's never my intent. So please don't racialize these issues, but there are people who benefit from it. There are people who sell newspapers, there are people who, who gain social prominence from taking these points of view. And they're always going to be here. They're never going away. Believe my colleagues alone. Come after Gregory Young. Leave them alone. I can take it. God built me for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Gregory Young. Just to be sure that that's Gregory Young who wants the blame, not this one. Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's, I think that's all the communicates we have. So now we have the next item, which is president's report. I'll make a very brief report today. I hope that we can have a Natural Resources Committee meeting to discuss, it doesn't have to be immediate, but to discuss an article that I was texted from the Harvard Public Health website by former Commissioner Mario Chavez about how the number one source of manganese in civic drinking water systems is from fracking. And I thought that might be an appropriate thing for our Natural Resources Committee to meet and discuss and see if we could maybe hear from some members of the industry. That's just a request. That's the, that's the sum of my report. Now we have no old business and new business. 11.1. Mr. Clerk?
Our first item under new business today is to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance number 6443 of 2024. That is in relation to a parish zoning case 24-12-P. And that is an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of a property located on the west side of Mansfield Road approximately 600 feet north of Keithville Lodge Road in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District to C2 Corridor Commercial Zoning District, and otherwise provide with respect to.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lazarus, second by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Lazarus, do you wish to speak?
District 11 has no opposition.
Okay. Great. We can vote.
It looks like you just didn't lock your vote in yet. There you go. Thank you very much. And that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition. That brings us to 11.2, which is to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance number 644 of 2024 in relation to parish zoning case 24-15-P. That's an ordinance to amend the volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the north side of Locust Hill Road approximately 920 feet west of the United States Highway 79 in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District to I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, and otherwise provide.
I have a motion from Commissioner Epperson, second from Commissioner Cothran. Commissioner Epperson, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. Moving to advance to Thursday's agenda for action, and I'd also like to state that there was a tremendous amount of opposition relative to this rezoning request, and it will be my intention to uphold the parish zoning commission's decision in this particular bench. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson. We can vote.
It looks like maybe it didn't pick up your vote. Thank you. And that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition. That brings us next to 11.3, which is to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance 6445 of 2024 in relation to parish zoning case 24-16-P. That's an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the east side of Lenwood Avenue approximately 1,650 feet south of Mount Zion in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District to C4 Heavy Commercial Zoning District, and otherwise provide with respect to.
I have a motion from Commissioner Cothran, second by Commissioner Gage-Watts. Commissioner Cothran?
Yes, I would like to call Mr. Clark up just for a minute to discuss this particular ordinance, because if I remember correctly, it's been some time, as I remember, they recommended that this go to C3 versus C4. Am I correct? Okay, so that's good. You're good.
You've got the answer you needed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you wish to, should we vote now? Does anyone want to speak? I'm ready to vote. Your motion was to move this forward, is that right?
Yes, to move it forward, but the thing is, again, as I previously stated, the PCC recommended C3 versus C4, and I'm going with the recommendation that they made as well, to C3.
Oh, so we're changing it as we move it forward, is that right? Okay, so the motion is to move forward with the amendment of C3 instead of 3, C4?
That's not, not appropriate at this time.
Okay, so we'll just move it forward as is?
Correct.
Okay, let's vote.
And for, on the order for clarification, that means that the amendment can be made on Thursday?
The amendment can be made when it's, when it's considered for passage.
Right.
Because it's just on introduction for Thursday. There won't be, there would not be a public hearing, and so you wouldn't have the basis to take it up until the next meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the understanding of the commission's voting, as well as for the public vote. Thank you.
And for those commissioners who may not have seen a situation like this as well yet either, to make that kind of amendment, you would just need to have a public hearing first.
Okay, so that one passed. Now we're on 11.4.
And I'm sorry, for the record, that did pass with 12 in support and none in opposition. And that brings us to 11.4, which is to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance number 6446 of 24, I'm sorry, of 2024 in relation to PCC case 24-19-P. That's an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the southeast corner of Dixie Blanchard Road, that's LA 173, and Old Moringsport Road, which is LA 538, in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RE Residential Estate Zoning to RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District, and otherwise provide with respect to.
I have a motion from Commissioner Crackman, second by Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Crackman?
District 1 has no opposition.
Okay. No one else on the board? We can vote.
Commissioner Young, I feel like I saw you vote, but it's still not, there you go. I was being sensitive. I apologize. It's, that motion does carry 12 in support and none in opposition. That brings us to the next item for your review and consideration is 11.5 advancing, or the, I'm sorry, the consideration of advancing the introduction of ordinance number 6447 of 2024 in relation to parish zoning case 24-13-P. That's an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the south side of East Florida Lucas Road approximately 1,290 feet west of Ellerby Road in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R1-7 Single Family Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, and otherwise provide with respect to.
A motion from Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Cothran. Commissioner Jones, do you wish to speak?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move to englovo. Now, just miss, I want to miss a miss global.
Okay, let's, Commissioner Atkins, do you wish to speak?
District Nine has no opposition. We just.
Okay.
Go and count it out.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition. That brings us to 11.6, considering the advancement of introduction of ordinance number 6448 of 2024 in relation to parish zoning case 24-20-P. That is an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the southwest corner of Lenwood Avenue and Mayo Road. And that's in Caddo Parish. That's a zoning change from RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District to R1-7 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
A motion from Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Cothran. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. I participated in the neighborhood meeting on this matter, and there was no meaningful 意見 here. I participated in the neighborhood.
Sorry, there we go, sorry. I participated in the neighborhood meeting on this, and there was no significant opposition, so District Nine is supportive of this.
Thank you. Okay, we can vote.
Commissioner Epperson, thank you. And that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition. Bringing us now to 11.7, considering the advancement of introduction of ordinance number 6449 of 2024 in relation to parish zoning case 24-21-P. That's an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the south side of K Lane approximately 480 feet west of East Kings Highway in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to C2 Corridor Commercial Zoning District, and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
I have a motion from Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind the members of the commission, this is the, the item that Ms. and Mrs. Little discussed at the beginning of the meeting during public comments, and they also provided you all with a package on the item at your desk. And I am supporting, District Nine is supportive of forwarding this to Thursday's meeting.
Okay. This is 11.7. We can vote on 11.7.
Thank you. And that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition. That brings us now to the consideration of advancing the introduction of ordinance number 6450 of 2024. That's an ordinance prohibiting the placement of certain monuments on parish property and otherwise providing with respect thereto. From Commissioner Epperson.
Move to advance the introduction on Thursday.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Epperson, second by Commissioner Crackman. Do you wish to speak on your motion?
No.
Commissioner Crackman, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, I had some friendly amendments to it. When would be the appropriate time for that? Whenever it has a public hearing?
I don't think this one's going to need a public hearing. I mean, it needs a public hearing, but it doesn't need a zoning public hearing.
When would be the appropriate time?
I mean, I would think it's, to be perfectly safe, it's the same thing after the public hearing of the item, which would be after your, at your second regular session of this month.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that's on the 19th, if my memory is correct today. 22nd, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We can vote.
And that carries with 12 in support and none in opposition. That brings us now to 11.9, considering the advancement of introduction of ordinance 6451 of 2024. That's an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorize the parish administrator or designee to sell those properties of Caddo, to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interest and certain surplus adjudicated properties, and otherwise provide with respect to.
A motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Gage-Watts. Commissioner Thomas?
I have no opposition to this ordinance and support advancement.
Okay. Commissioner Gage-Watts, do you have a? Commissioner Gage Watts, do you have a?
Yes, I have a motion to amend and englobo the next items of 11.10, 11.11, 11.12, 11.13, 11.14, 11.15, 11.16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 18, and 19, 20. So those are out of order.
I'm sorry, those are actually misnumbered on the.
So that should be 24, 25, and 26?
You are correct.
And advance to Thursday.
Okay, a motion to englobo and advance the remainder of the agenda by Commissioner Gage Watts, second by the Chair. Any discussion? I don't see anyone's names on any boards. Raise your hand if you want to speak. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I'm always respectful of our parliamentarians' views. And in this particular case, I don't think I would want to englobo and advance all of these items. So I'll be fighting against it. Thank you.
Okay, did you mean our Vice President's view?
Sorry, our Vice President's view, sorry. Sorry, I forgot her current promotion.
Okay.
Six months ago.
So anyone else wish to speak? We can vote. This is just to advance, it's not to approve.
And Commissioner Jones and Thomas? Thank you. That motion passes with 10 in support, two in opposition. And that brings us to our second round of communicates and committee reports. If I could, while y'all are making your way to it, did want to thank everybody for their accommodating, getting used to this new system that we have set up today for the audiovisual equipment. Unfortunately, the problem that we're having with the discussion manager is actually not related to that, just coincidentally happening at the same time. So that is not related to why you can't see your speaker queue. But, but we hope to fix that problem as well. And if you do have any comments on how you are hearing or when you look at the playback of this later, how you can hear and see items, if you'd like to share those with us, we'll be really happy to get with the vendor and make sure that we have those changes made. I do think you're gonna really enjoy some of the new features of this system. And we appreciate giving us the confidence to make it happen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we have communicates and committee reports again. Anyone on the board? Commissioner Burrell?
We don't know the system.
I was checking to see whether or not the administration receives any correspondence back from the city on these unlicensed motorbikes that we have in our communities. I still see them running around at night.
We do not have any formal feedback, Commissioner?
Well, formally and informally, just wanted to.
Well, it's just, again, one of those things, the police force feels like they're dealing with a lot of different issues. But we'll continue to have dialogue about this particular one. On the unlicensed motorbike, I think they're, they're, I don't want to speak for the police in, but they are.
But you all are having discussions on it because, again, you know, we've had several situations where kids have gotten killed on these things. And that definitely raises a concern. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Cothran?
Yes, I'd just like to share, this past Thursday, I had the opportunity to share with the Rotary Club at Copeland's what we do, how we do, why we do it. It still amazes me that the number of people can't, that really do not know the difference between the city council and parish commissioners. And it was very entertaining because they were a small group and we had a great time just sitting and talking about what the parish actually does and what we're responsible for. In addition to that, I will be going to Southern Hills Community Meeting this afternoon at 6 o'clock. So anyone that live in the Southern Hill area, please be there at 6 o'clock today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. Looks like that's all the communicates we have. Do we have any late citizen comments?
Not that, nope.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
This meeting is adjourned.
And before you leave, if I could just remind everybody to take a look at that consent agenda. That some of those items are, you know, have been postponed and you may not be, it may have been a while since you've looked at it.